Good evening, I'd like to call this meeting of the Big Walnut Board of Education to order. And the mission of Big Walnut Elementary Schools is to inspire and guide each student to his or her maximum potential. And go ahead and start with the beginning, Pledge of Allegia.
Pledge of Allegia. This is my flag. The United States of America. And to the Republic where we stand. One nation, under God. Indivisible, literate, and justice for all.
Jeremy, you could please call the roll.
Mrs. Dorsh.
Here.
Mr. Fuji.
Here.
Mrs. Lee.
Here.
Mr. Ross.
Here.
And Mr. Schneider and Mr. Crowell are not currently with us.
Mr. Crowell expects to join us a little bit later. All right, that takes us to item six. It is recommended the board approve the minutes of the January fourteenth, 2021 organizational meeting, and the January fifth, fourteenth, and twenty-first, 2021 regularly scheduled board meetings. May I have a motion, please?
So move.
Second.
Is it worth noting that January fifth was a special board meeting and not a regularly scheduled one? Does that matter from that?
I think they're all, if we're calling them, I think it's probably fine.
Okay, that's what I'm sure.
Anything else? Jeremy, whenever you're ready.
Okay. Mr. Fuji.
Yes.
Mrs. Dorsh.
Yes.
Mrs. Lee.
Yes.
Mr. Ross.
Yes.
I'll take this to item seven, superintendent's report.
Thank you. I'm happy to welcome up with Annie Clark, our principal from Beatty, and I think she has a couple of special guests with her, so I will let her introduce them. And she's going to be sharing her voting presentation and also update on her building.
Hi, everybody.
Good evening.
Hi. I'm Annie Clark, the principal, Big Walnut Elementary, and, oh. Do I have to hold this? Okay. And I just wanted to take a minute to go over my goals for the year. And basically, the first goal is a student achievement goal. And by the end of the school year, we will maintain or increase the number of students that are successful with reading abilities and just their tier-one instructional support. So basically, those kiddos that stay in the classroom and are getting all of the instruction from the classroom teachers. So to start the year, we started off with eighty-two percent of our in-person students were on track with just that tier-one support, which is kind of remarkable considering the COVID-19 slide and the summer slide. So that was great. Some of the action steps to make sure that we reach that goal is just to continue to look at data on a monthly basis, do any PD that is needed, also just doing intentional walkthroughs, providing staff with feedback, and really just looking at that median for the star, for our grades two through four. And then when we did our mid-year benchmark checks, we are at eighty-one percent of students that are on track just with that tier-one instructional support. So that's great. And some of those numbers are a little skewed because we had some kiddos move in from VLP learning or maybe into the district, just moving in. So I'm really happy about that. Our teachers are doing a great job. In the back, on the back of this paper, the second goal is the professional principal performance. And really just wanted to take some meaningful PD and give it to staff just on using data to guide instruction. And we used star, we did some star PD just recently, really diving into those reports, and then what can we do with that data in order to drive instruction. And we had some teacher leaders, one who's with me tonight, present that PD to, or two that are with me tonight, Tanya and Andrea, to present that to staff, at the staff meeting. Also, we had another teacher really dive into the Lexia data and provide some PD to our K-1 teachers. So that was my goal at the beginning of the year. And to this date, we've met and really dove into it about five times. So excited about that. And it all kind of ties into our student performance, and we're doing a great job. And our kids are inspired daily. And one of the reasons that they're inspired is because of the great team behind me here. A couple years ago, I think it was two years ago, I got a text message, I think it was like nine o'clock at night, from Andrea Cavalleros, our third-grade teacher, saying, "I have this great idea. I can't wait to tell you about it." And she presented this Kind, Kids Inspiring Kindness Campaign, which is awesome. And Tori Blazer has been a huge help in making this a reality. So I'm going to hand it over to them, so they can take credit for all the amazing things happening.
All right, hi, everyone.
Good evening.
As she said, I'm a third-grade teacher. I'm used to speaking in front of kids, so please excuse my shaky voice and, you know, I'm just not used to the adults. So it was last school year, I actually got a message from Tori, I think it was maybe ten o'clock at night. And she was inspired by something happening in, I believe it was Florida. And they were having like a, like a spirit week. And the kids were going to wear their favorite team jersey. And one student didn't have his favorite team jersey, so he made it, which was University of Tennessee. And he got bullied because of it. I don't know if this sounds familiar, guys remember it. University of Tennessee caught wind of it. And they ended up printing the T-shirt and donating all of the proceeds to an anti-bullying campaign organization. So she texted me and she was like, "Hey, do you think we could do something like that at our school?" And it just kind of grew from there. We decided to, instead of donating it to one organization, we thought we would create a grant fund within our own school and let our classrooms do kindness projects. So it all starts, if you want to go to the next slide, actually, two more, yep. Our mission is to light up the world with kindness, one classroom at a time. And I think, you know, this year more than ever, it's so important to focus on kindness, to focus on the whole child, that social, emotional learning. And that's exactly what this does. We kick off every year with a T-shirt design contest, so all of our students can submit a design. And we choose the top few designs, the students vote, and then it's printed on T-shirts, which you guys see. And we have a little gift for you guys. And then we take all of the proceeds from those T-shirts, as well as donations from local companies, Sunbury Chiropractic, Target Mobility Sales, Walmart, and then some individuals just made some donations. And that goes into a grant fund. And our classrooms can decide on a cause or a certain project that they're feeling inspired about. And they can apply to use some of this money. So if you click on the logo down at the bottom, we've created a website. And then up in the top right, if you click on Completed Projects, you can see some of the projects that have been done. I believe this year, we've had six projects completed. Last year, we had several. So the first one is our virtual kids made blankets for my very own blanket. They donate them to foster children, to give them something of their own sense of security. The next one, our fourth graders created cookie decorating kits that go out with bountiful backpacks, which each week, there are food bags that are sent home to some families in need within our community. So they gave them something, a little extra fun for the holidays, everything they needed to decorate some cookies. The next one, every single third-grade class also made a blanket for my very own blanket. They're based out of Westerville, wonderful organization. Actually, Tori took some kids to drop off the blankets, and they got to ring a bell, and they took them through the whole process of how everything works there, which was really cool. So we made thirty blankets for them. The next one is Turning Point Shelter. All of these so far have happened this school year. Turning Point Shelter is a shelter in Delaware for victims of domestic abuse. And our first graders created artwork to decorate the halls during Christmas. And then also made a $200 donation to the organization to help out with their giving back program.
Yeah, their holiday giving.
Holiday giving, which helps the victims of abuse. Next is Life Care Alliance. We've done several things with them. They are a food pantry out of Columbus, and they feed the elderly. They have a meal program where they can come and pick up meals. They have a kitchen. They even feed their pets. They have a Meals on Wheels program. So Mrs. Norris did this with her art class. And all of the students decorated placemats, which would go out with the Meals on Wheels. And it was even featured in the news, which was really cool. The next one starts our projects from last year. And for this one, the second-grade classes, all three of them, got with the Ohio Wildlife Center and to ask them what some of their needs were. And they created bird perches and some warmers for baby animals. So they got to, you know, kind of learn about some animals and come together to make some things that they were in need of. The next one is the Inn at Walnut Trail, which is the newer facility here in town, a nursing home facility. And all of our, actually, two of our third-grade classes sent them love boxes last year at Valentine's, Valentine, excuse me, Valentines. They were full of just special gifts, fuzzy socks, chocolate. They created coloring books. Gosh, this has been since last year, I'm trying to remember all of the things. Just some, you know, a special gift for them to have and open. Every single resident was gifted one of those boxes. The next one, Ms. Norris's class created sleeves that were handed out at Coffee Vault for the month of February, and then it coincided with Random Acts of Kindness Day. The next one, CHA Animals Shelter, was our third-grade class that made some things for an animal shelter. I think it's out of Columbus. And then again, we have Life Care Alliance below that. Last year, my class had the opportunity to go there and volunteer. We had three different groups. One of them worked in the Meals on Wheels area, prepping things for them. One of them worked in the pet area, so they were bagging dog food and different pet food. And then others got to work in the groceries-to-go section. So they actually got to get the orders for the food and like fill the orders and hand them to the people, which was really neat. And then just some more, I won't go on with all of them, I think there's a couple more down there. So all of these are made possible by the profits that we get. And, you know, I love teaching at Big Walnut for so many reasons. One of those reasons is because we teach to the whole child. And we not only consider, you know, what their reading goals are and their math goals, and we want to teach them all of those things, but, you know, essentially, we just want them to be kind people. We, I think about the people that I work with, and they have so many strengths. But when it comes down to it, it's these, you know, personal strengths of that kindness and, you know, being a leader and working together. And that's what all of these kids do. And it's just amazing to watch them doing it. I remember I had one student one year, and he just struggled academically, struggled socially, just didn't have good relationships. And we started these projects, and he just rose up as this amazing leader. And I remember like the students kind of like looking at him like, "What in the world?" And, you know, I took note of it. And he just like, in that moment, like found himself, and it just spilled over into his academics and every other area of his learning, which was just really amazing. So there's just a lot of good life skills that these kids are learning. And they're giving back to our community, and they're realizing the needs of our community. So it's just, it's really cool to watch. If you go to the next slide, this is our, we have committee members. So every time a classroom wants to do a project, they submit an application, their budget proposal, and these are the people that it goes to, just so that there's, you know, different sets of eyes. We have our principal, Annie Clark. We have two teachers on the committee and then two parents from the school. Go ahead to the next one. And then, yay, 2020, our kindness was not canceled. We had big plans for, you know, the initiative this year to grow it and do more. And maybe we didn't get to do all of those things, but, I mean, so far, we've done six projects, and we have more in the works, so we're really proud of that. And then here's what our students have to say about the projects.
It makes me feel good to do kind things to others, that we should do them more often. It inspires me to be kind to everyone because everyone is special. Or makes me be kind and makes others feel good inside.
It inspires me to do kind things to other people. And the world right now just needs kindness, and kindness, and it's the right thing to do.
So we wanted to go big, and we got to do that this past week with our latest project. And I'll let Tori talk about kind of how that came to be.
I promised to be real quick about this because I'm also not great at talking in front of people. So back in November, Annie had mentioned maybe doing a school-wide kindness project and tying it in to Valentine's Day. And we have a member of our community, Ivan Harrington, who works for a company that works with Heinz-Erling communities. And they're a community located in Columbus, and they care for children and adults with severe and profound developmental disabilities. They have several different facilities. I think they have roughly a hundred and eighty-some residents in between their facilities. We decided that in the spirit of going big, we would focus on their children's facility, which houses eighty-four residents and has a hundred and seventy staff members. And we wanted to do something special for each and every resident at that facility. So after talking to Ivan about sort of how COVID has affected the kids at this facility, we know that, you know, it's been super tough on residents everywhere in assisted-living facilities, but especially being a kid and going through this and not being able to understand, you know, why your family can't come, we thought that this would be a great opportunity to make something special for everybody, every one of the residents. So I'll let you talk about the actual project. But it was big, and it took several months, but it was awesome.
So go ahead to the next one. We created eighty-four sensory love boxes, one for each child there. And it contained ten different items. Only three of those items were store-bought. Everything else was made by our students. Every single classroom, every single child participated and made at least one thing, if not more, that went into these boxes. So in the next slides, you'll see what each grade level did. So our kindergartners were in charge of making fiddle rings, which were just, you know, little rings with beads on them. It was a perfect thing at their level, they could practice their counting skills. Our first graders, this was a fun one, they had to tie six strings to create a rainbow ribbon, what did we call them, rainbow rings. And we learned that a lot of them could not tie, so we got to practice that with them, but they, you know, needed a little extra help. Yes, and one classroom had a substitute. Yes. But we had a lot of help, they all came together. And then they also made some sensory smell bottles, which had like some oils in there for them to just smell. Our second graders made shake eggs, which were just like a little plastic egg filled with beans, but we didn't want those to spill out everywhere, so we wrapped them up in a fuzzy sock, which gave it like another level of sensory for them. And then our third graders, they decorated the boxes as well as made feely frames. So it was a picture frame with four different materials. There's sandpaper, sequins, like a soft fuzzy material, and then bubble wrap, so that they could feel all of those things. Our fourth graders made, it's kind of like a stress ball, but it was water beads, so a water bead stress bag. And then on the next one, all of our students made a card for the staff members. And then a big thank you to Cheryl's Cookies. They donated two hundred cookies so that we could, you know, show the staff some appreciation as well. And then a couple of the grade levels, second and fourth, made artwork for the residents. And I just love the artwork because you give them some direction, and then they come up with the sweetest, most heartfelt messages that, you know, you didn't even think that they'd be able to come up with. It's just really sweet to watch. And then this is the reason for it all, our hearts are full. These are a few of the residents opening and enjoying the boxes. And, you know, this just, it fills my heart up. But what you don't see is all of the lessons that our students got to learn in the process. And I think this is something that they're just going to always remember. So that's all.
Thank you to Andrea and Tori for all of their work on this. This is amazing, and kids, kids will talk about it forever. So, thank you.
Can I thank her, Annie, before she gives the podium there?
I might have one.
I can't see any facial expressions.
I might have, no, in terms of the presentation, like, what is there not to love about that? So honestly, thank you to everyone. I suppose in terms of the theme that I might share or comment I might provide in this moment is the one slide with the header that kindness is not canceled. I really appreciate the resilience, kind of adaptability, and not giving up on something just because it was going to look different than maybe you imagined it when you kind of started thinking about this or came up with the ideas.
It's important to give up on.
Amen. No, I truly appreciate that. And I think it also goes with the theme, like, the school district has been in session, and teachers are finding ways to be resilient and adaptable, and I really appreciate that. Ms. Clark, the one question I might have, relative to your goals and what you shared at the beginning, eighty-two percent of the students in person for the reading goal, I just wonder how that might compare as you talk about summer slide and academics of the past, given March to June.
Well, I would say that first, when we started to, when we came back in session and we started assessing our kids and we started to get all the data and have our data teams, the first initial thought is to panic, "Oh, my gosh." But then it's, we had to take a step back and look at where they left and not look at where they're supposed to be. It was more, you know, the growth. And so that's something that we focus on. But I think it goes to show that, number one, our kids are resilient as well. Even though they were out of session, and it might not have been consistent instruction they were getting, they were still getting something. And we came back, hit the ground running, and we just started with our, getting the data and getting our interventions up and running. But honestly, I would say in, for, to the years past, it's been, it's very comparable.
Okay.
Usually, if not, I would say we hang around the eighty percent as far as how many kids are in tier-two or tier-three instruction. So I'm pleased with it, but, I mean, we have amazing teachers.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Thanks, Annie. Tori, Andrea, appreciate it. All right, and Jen gets, did you have?
Yeah, I, sorry, I was trying to have Annie see my facial expression. No, I just wanted to echo what Mr. Fuji said. We were talking at the last meeting about the fact that all of us have gotten to a point where we're kind of tired of the, "Well, because of COVID, we can't do this." And just so appreciate that that wasn't an excuse that any of you, you know, even considered using, that we're not going to continue this great program. I remember, I think last year, you came in and did, we saw a little bit of this. And it's, I mean, I couldn't believe that you've done six projects already this year. I mean, that's amazing. So, thank you.
Well, Jen gets to follow that with talking about state testing, so I feel sorry for her because that's a hard act to follow, but I might stop.
Well, let me start with something a little bit more exciting than that, especially if you have a parent of a five-year-old or a little one. Our kindergarten enrollment is happening right now, so that is exciting. Especially, I'm familiar with that feeling of getting your little one registered. So we are at two-hundred-and-fourteen students as of this evening, which is high compared to where we normally are at this point. So we have about three-hundred-ish kindergartners right now. Of course, some are at home in our virtual learning program. So we're already at two-fourteen, and we're in week one. So it's very high for this time. We generally have some more trickle-in over the spring. And then also, we have a big push in August for people who enroll as well. So interested to see how that number creeps up. Something that is also interesting that we always look at is the percentage of half-day versus full-day. And when we first introduced the full-day option, we saw that number grow over the first several years. And now we've seen it really kind of maintain over the last three years. And so as of today, we're at seventeen percent requesting half-day for next year. And today, we have fifteen percent in our half-day program, not including our virtual learning students who are technically enrolled in half-day. So seventeen right now, but generally, we'll see two to three percent decrease as we get closer to August. Parents changing their mind, deciding they want to go full-time, students who might need a full-day program. So we're right around that fifteen percent again. So people are moving here, that's for sure. And something much less exciting is testing, standardized testing and state testing. And I figured I was just going to lump all standardized testing updates into one for you. So we'll start with gifted testing, and I just wanted to share because I believe it was last month I shared that, the dates for our second and fourth-grade students to get that gifted testing. And because of the weather we've been having, it has continually been pushed back. So the latest update as of this morning is those students will be tested tomorrow and Monday. So just wanted to share that update, assuming, hopefully, knock on wood, we don't have any more snow days. And if so, it'll just continue to be pushed back a day. Another test that is coming up, hard to believe that it is the twenty-third of June. I was, when I was kind of looking through my notes, I thought, "Oh, this is two weeks away." And that's next week. So we have our juniors taking the ACT on the twenty-third. And typically, we take this off-site at a different venue so that the students can spread out, and it's more quiet, the bells aren't ringing, the hallway traffic isn't happening. But that phrase we don't like to hear, "Because of COVID." The venues don't want us, so they are not opening their doors to let all of the students come in and test. So we had to kind of regroup and rethink. And so because of that, and this has been shared with families, and it will, I believe Mr. Jadoss is sending out another all-call, just to remind families, on Tuesday, the twenty-third, only the juniors or people taking ACT will attend the high school. So freshmen, sophomores, seniors, anyone not taking ACT will be off on the twenty-third. That does not apply preschool through eighth grade, you're all in. So just wanted to make sure that that was really clear. And the reason for that switch at the high school is so that we can spread those juniors out. They all have proctors, use all the classrooms, and give them some space and have everyone proctored it in a safe environment without bells and interruptions and that type of thing. That's a very important test for many of those juniors. And the last one is the Ohio State test. I think we were all kind of hoping and crossing our fingers. I hadn't done a ton of planning yet because in the back of my mind, I was really hoping the state was going to say that we could waive the test again this year, but that is not the case. We are required to, third grade through high school, to take the Ohio State test in the spring. The only adjustment that they've made is they've added a week onto the window. So the window now goes, for math, it goes through May. And English, it goes through the end of April. But even so, districts still have to pick a fifteen-day window. So even though they've given us a six-week window that we can choose from, we don't have six weeks to complete it, we have to choose fifteen days. So they added a week on, really not for districts like us. The intent was really for those districts that are just coming back to school. There's a lot of districts just coming back to in-person mid-March, beginning March. And so giving them an opportunity to actually be in class and get acclimated before they take the tests. So at this time, and I will tell you, we have a meeting about this on Wednesday, but at this time, we intend to continue, just like we did last year, similar schedules. I know we have families that plan things around those schedules. Believe it or not, I start getting calls in the summer asking when our testing is going to be in the spring for families who are wanting to plan vacations and that type of thing. I'm sure the high school in particular gets those as well. So we are going to keep them and run, as, at this point, we believe we're going to keep them, official will decide on Wednesday, but that we will just keep them as is. And we've been in school from the beginning, so shouldn't be, shouldn't be an issue. And the other problem with moving it is it starts to run into exams, AP testing, and it gets a little bit crazy towards the end of April and May. So we intend to move forward as we have in years past. Questions?
You have to bring VLP students in for those, from what I've read. Is that still correct?
Yes, we do. Yep, we have to bring them in. Our elementary students are, and this is all, all the details are getting ironed out, but right now, that, what I can share is that the elementary students are, our VLP teachers are getting assigned to a our VLP teachers are getting assigned to a building. So, if you have teacher A, she may be meeting with you at an open classroom in GRE. So, they will get dropped off, parent pickup style, after all the other kids arrive. Dropped off, go into their testing, which will be, you know, students will be, will be separated as much as possible. Of course, parents can opt if they feel it's unsafe. We have had them, bring them in for the third-grade test as well and for other things. And we really haven't had too many people that were not willing to bring them in. I would say less than a handful.
So, just keeping in mind, if we do, that'll just count as a ding on us, which is kind of out of our control, so we're not gonna worry about it too much?
I believe the language that ODE put out says something to the effect of, continue with testing and testing all students to the greatest extent possible. So, it does leave a little, if you feel it's unsafe, but how does that impact the district? And how, so, we're doing the best we can. And kudos to Jenna Crawford. I know she's done a ton of work with, was our VLP coordinator. She's done a ton of work with the elementary principals and secondary principals, just trying to make sure we can get those kids in and get them tested in a safe manner that the parents feel comfortable with.
Jen, I had a question about kindergarten registration. Have you, with it only being the first week, I'm sure nobody's really done a deep dive into, are we seeing students who may have been red-shirted this year?
Helps the football team.
That are coming in, kind of thing?
That is a great question, and I will look into that because now I'm curious. I will look into that tomorrow. We've done, you know, what buildings to kind of evaluate, is there one building that's showing more than others? They're really pretty even across the board. I would say Souders is a little low right now. But they're pretty even otherwise from the other three buildings. But that's a great question, and I will certainly look into that because I know that has been a lot of kind of talk around the moms and the groups and that people who didn't want their first experience to be during a COVID year, so to speak, that they held them back. I have a couple of friends in particular, I know who did that. So, I think that we are gonna see a big group this year. And so, maybe that could account for some of that two-fourteen that I mentioned earlier.
I'm also wondering if that might account for larger, like, first-grade classes? If they stayed home or whatever for kindergarten? And then what happens once first grade hits? It'll be interesting to see.
Yes.
Remember, we flatlined on our attendance with enrollment this year. And we kind of predicted that this would happen. So, it'll be interesting to see how much we rebound.
I had two questions. First, as you mentioned, no adjustments to the testing schedule, that they're still gonna have those requirements. But do I remember that there was some sort of adjustment made based on last year's spring and the point calculation for graduation?
Say that again?
Within, within the English, math, science testing bands, you had to have a certain amount of points accumulated? Was that based on letter grade last spring?
Yes, it is. It's based off of letter grade, yep. Because we didn't test last year. And that brings up another question, things that we kind of didn't think about until it came to the moment. We put kids in compacted math. And part of, part of the criteria, the rubric for that is how they did on last year's OST. Well, now we need to rethink because we have fourth graders going into fifth grade who don't have that component as part of the rubric. So, now, what other, what other measure can we use? So, that's, that, not having that testing, while it was a good thing we didn't have it last year, it definitely poses some, some challenges that we need to figure out.
Don't we also have to start that score?
Yep. We like, we like to, generally with that one, with them going into intermediate, we generally have four data points. So, now just having three, so thinking, hopefully, to get at least one more in there.
And the other one was just the kind of comment that you made about hoping not to have more snow days. And I've also lost visibility on this. Is there, is there still, did we approve blizzard bags earlier?
Well, we can do remote learning days. Remember, that kind of took the place with the pandemic. So, where we are on that is we are beyond the minimum school day. So, we go by hours instead of days, remember? We, our tightest cohort is our seniors because they get out early for graduation. We graduate the year, or the year before, the weekend before. So, they're the ones that we're watching, and they can still have five more days before we have to worry about. So, I don't know that we'll do five more. We may, you know, we may look at what that looks like. But, you know, we talked about it with our team and with us not being in hybrid, for the kids that are all in in-person, to try to do remote days. And now our little ones don't have Chromebooks at home, and do people have internet access? It's just a lot of logistics to do for a day or two. So, if we get to a point where we're getting short on those hours, we will definitely look at that in lieu of obviously extending the year, asking for anything, like a makeup day.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else for Jen? All right. Thank you, Jen. And I think we're shifting back to you, and then I'll finish my report so we don't keep our guests through all the construction and our finances and everything. Let's say one mistake.
Item seven-point-two, recognition. And Sheri, I think you're up first.
Okay. Adrian? You wanna join me up here in the middle? I don't know about you, but I am happy that we had Mrs. Young talk about state testing a little bit. Because hearing about all of that kindness kind of made me proud. And I had a little bit of time to, you know, get it back together before we talked to you. But reading through this, all of this great information about you, it sounds like you probably like all of that kindness stuff too at BW, do you? Yeah? Is that a big part of why you like BW? Yeah? Well, do you wanna tell us a little bit about yourself?
Uh, I'm just going to...
Yeah?
I live in, like, a school.
Do you have brothers or sisters?
Yes, I have two.
Okay.
And I've got a brother who has a board, which I got this year. My, uh, my brother, he really does love it. He really trusts me.
I like this part about, what do you, tell us what you want to be when you grow up.
A lawyer.
A lawyer? Why do you want to be a lawyer?
At, uh, like, people, uh, uh, as, or, uh, be, like, say, guilty, uh, like, uh...
You want to help people. Well, that's, that's pretty great to hear. And your favorite subject at school?
Uh, that is math.
I don't like math, yeah. Okay, well, I am gonna read a couple of the quotes here. There's a bunch of quotes from, from teachers. And you will be able to take this home, so your family can read all of them. But I'm gonna read a couple here in front of everybody, okay? Mr. Flanagan says, Adrian is great to heaven bless. He always has a positive attitude and gives his best effort no matter the activity. He cares about others and is always trying to help out. Adrian even picks up chairs after lunch to make the custodian's job easier. Well deserved. And here's another one from Mrs. Cavaliaro. Adrian always came prepared to math class with three things. A positive attitude, unwavering confidence, and a smile that could light up the room. When answering a question or contributing to a discussion, Adrian's eagerness and sheer excitement about learning were all apparent. Most importantly, he was always willing to show kindness to his classmates. Keep shining, Adrian, and congratulations. So, everyone else has pretty great things to say about you too. So, on behalf of the board, I want to present this to you. Congratulations to you for being student of the month at BW.
Mrs. Young, are you able to do our photography? Adrian, if you, if you want to join and, to your uncle? Or grandpa?
I was on for Woody Bowles' grandpa.
Okay. He loves his uncle, so I went, sure. Gotcha. Well, his family, if you want to go with Mrs. Young, she's gonna take a picture, and you'll be in our deagle examiner.
Okay.
And next up, we have Madeline Waters. And she is our Big Walnut High School student of the month. And Maddie will have great state presence as she comes up here. All of her theater, and also, because this is like old hat for her, because I have from that, the issue of the Sunbury News that's on Thursday, March twentieth, two thousand fourteen. Look right there. This is your second time getting this award. Well, I'll talk a little bit, Maddie is a senior at Big Walnut High School. Her predecessor, Nicole and Keith, and she has a brother Connor, who is also fresh, who is a freshman at BW at Jet. Why don't you tell us a little bit about all your activities at high school?
Okay, I'm involved in student council with Jake. I'm president of student council. I'm president of my class. I'm in principal leadership here, Mr. Jados. And I highly and most diligently work in like the drama department. So, I've been on a lot of productions of that and even done like some set stuff, had to go on a really tall ladder and all the spell and all that kind of stuff. I do all like the choirs and stuff. And we didn't get to this year or like the last year because of COVID. But usually, I go to like solo and ensemble and compete as an individual for, I guess, our school and also our choir, our slum choir, and sing for that. So, yeah, that's kind of what I do. I work at Hollister, which isn't really that important. And yeah, I like a lot of community service and I do a lot of stuff through student council and, yeah.
Well, I, if you're waiting to hear from your dream school.
That's correct.
If you're focused on double majoring in fine arts and acting and political science.
And yeah, I am curious, what are the dream schools? Are you sharing those?
Yeah, I'll share them, but I feel like maybe I'm teasing myself if I don't. I'm really, my dream dream school since I was like seven, probably since that picture was taken. I wanted to go to NYU for acting.
Yes.
Yeah, so that kind of goes together. So, that's really the dream school. I'm also waiting to hear about from like Syracuse, which is a school I've more recently been like, oh, that's really the school. And then my dad is from Ireland, so I'm applying to a few, a few schools there. Everybody's gonna like it there, and it's a good acting program as well, so I'm kind of looking to that, yeah.
Well, Maddie has performed very strong academically. She carries a three-point-seven GPA, and she's received many awards. Spanish Honor Society, TRIAM National Music Honor Society. And she's taken a rigorous course schedule filled with AP honors and CCC courses. And a couple of things that she just had to say. Maddie is a delight, she is responsible and mature, but most importantly, Maddie is kind. She is humble despite having many, many accomplishments and talents to be proud of. And her greatest skill truly is how compassionate and empathetic she is for every person and creature she encounters. Maddie takes everyone who has lost or won under her wing. It's a truly remarkable trait to see in someone her age. She will leave her mark on the world in a huge way and in the million and smaller ways we will never see. But we'll see how much better the world is because of them. Maddie always walks into a room and asks you how you are doing, no matter what is going on with her. Maddie will selflessly put others first, and it is obvious when you have been around Maddie for more than five minutes, she is the definition of compassion. So, congratulations.
Thank you.
What kind of cataloging system do you have?
No, this wasn't me. This was all me.
Yeah, it was the high school, believe it or not.
I thought she just has some sort of library.
That's impressive.
I knew she was, but I saw that, I was like, I know I've seen her get this before, so... Okay. All right. Ms. Thompson appears to be coming with a new microphone for somebody. Angie, I think, Hamburg, we're back to you.
All right. Just very quickly, and I shared it in the deagle examiner as well, but wanted to give a public thank you to the Delaware Public Health District and their coordination of a vaccine clinic for our staff members. I know we've talked all year about being in person and just really appreciative of everybody doing the work that they're doing to keep our kids in school and learning. So, we were very grateful for the opportunity to receive the first dose of the vaccine. And then we have the second one coming up here in just a couple of weeks in a repeat clinic. And that is hosted by O L T N G. So, again, a big thank you to our health commissioner, Sheila Hiddleston, her team. Also to Superintendent Mark Rafe and his team for hosting the clinic. And just really appreciate everyone's efforts. And it's so nice that we have a county where everybody can work together and make that happen. So, very appreciative of that. And that's all I have, other than turning it over to Doug for construction and the mark, unless you have any questions for me on that. All right, Doug, if you could enlighten us on construction, we would be appreciative.
All right. Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm gonna go back to the kindness presentation real quick. I volunteer with some folks that do Meals on Wheels with Life Care Alliance. That was wonderful to hear. I wasn't, did deliver meals the day the mats were presented, but that's a wonderful program. So, I'm proud to say I'm a part of participating there. Three things, monthly reports, and then I'll have one more thing to add at the end. So, in front of you, you have hard copies of them. Again, the first one, pictures, is the actual monthly report. And as I typically, I just highlighted a few things in yellow. Again, there's not a whole lot going on once you go to the high school. So, site athletics and site work. Again, we finished the underground plumbing, underground electrical. So, again, we're trying to do what we can. You see at the bottom there, again, weather dependent is huge. We're trying to still basically come out of the ground there, but we're still on schedule. Was always slated to have the bulk of the work start when the spring came, so we're not behind there. Elementary and central energy plant, both are essentially done. Probably the biggest thing is the central energy plant, we're just finalizing a few things inspection-wise. We got delayed a little bit because of weather, not COVID, but actually weather. Or recently, the state didn't come out and do inspections for a while, especially during the snow days, unfortunately. So, that's gonna move forward here in March, we believe, right at the beginning of March. And the high school, the big jewel that's coming out of the ground now. The biggest thing there that is kind of, people can see and understand and grasp, highlighted there that in February, we started painting walls. That's amazing. We're painting walls in Area Four, which is the, so, again, Mr. Jados was in here. We call it the ten o'clock classroom wing, or it's the fourteen-hundred wing, twenty-four-hundred, thirty-four-hundred wing. And down below there, we've talked about it for a long time. Roofing slowed down a little bit with all the snow, but we're still on track to get all the roofing done in March. Again, we're dried in, temporary enclosure, remember that was huge in early February? So, we achieved that, and we're on schedule there. But more importantly now, is completing that roofing, so it's a hundred percent done. Again, unless we get snow for the next couple of weeks, we should be on track to finish that in March. So, I'll stop there a second. Any questions on kind of the big picture on the three buildings, empty projects? Okay.
I'm sorry, say.
Yes. I watched the video tour and I loved it.
Oh, good.
And my favorite part was the comment that both gems have air conditioning.
Yes, I was politically smart enough to remember that.
We've maybe heard about that a few times.
Yes, that's usually not something you would make note of on a building tour. But this one, we thought it was important to note.
Yeah, that video was a big hit at our house. I mean, I'm pretty sure somebody watched it about three or four times.
Well, the video folks are speaking of, it's out on our public media. Actually, I'm amazed how many legs it has. I have a friend that grew up in Hilliard, which is where Mr. Joey Thomas, the videographer, a community member, a dad, his son is a kindergartner at P R E, Prairie Run Elementary. And he posted it to his website, and friends from Hilliard, who are friends with, with me and others, started calling me today saying, I just saw you in a video. Wow, circle of life, it's everywhere. So, it's amazing how it's getting the positive news out there about Big Walnut.
Huge thanks to Joey for doing that for us on a volunteer basis. He's been great.
Yes, just to reinforce it, that was all volunteer, the editing, the filming, everything.
A lot of the pictures that he, still pictures he's taken with the drone that were in the deagle examiner. So, we really appreciate that.
Anything else before you go to the reports? So, the only thing I've highlighted, so first, ours is the multi-page one. This is the Big Walnut Elementary, where the district's contingency. Again, contingency is there for unforeseen needs and circumstances that come up. I just highlighted on the very last page, and this was more a shout-out or thank you to our athletics director, Brian Shelton. On the very last page, you see I highlighted what's called Bulletin 307, delete wind screens. And what the heck's that? In the ball fields, in the outfield, you'll have wind screens. Usually, they're some type of marketing material, if we're lucky. Well, to Mr. Shelton's credit, he's already teamed with a marketing company that's already looking and seeking and actually making contracts now, so that wind screen will be free. So, we were able to get that construction dollar back into the project because of that. So, just wanted to highlight that positive. It's not a lot of money, but it's five thousand dollars, who would've spent it otherwise? So, very grateful he was able to do that for us. So, it's no cost to the district, and the same adds we have now in the current fields. Maybe at the bottom, they're also highlighted, last month, we were at nineteen percent. And this is encumbered or projected to be encumbered. We're now at eighteen percent. We still have a little ways to go to get to essentially probably about January of next year. But December first is when we're still on track to get the keys. But just a reminder, we're getting a little tight there on that money, but we're still in good shape. So, one pager then, and sorry, any questions on that one? The one pager again is Gilbane's contingency. I guess I didn't highlight anything, theirs remained about the same. They're still at twenty percent as of the date on this document. And... And really no surprises at this time in terms of where they're tracking. Again, that's their, our money, if you will, that's built in all their GMPs. They spend it with approval of the architect and the district, just as the contingencies are spent for unforeseen or anything to help expedite the work or working overtime, things like that. So I didn't highlight anything there because there were no really changes from last month's report. Any questions on that document? Okay. Going to add one thing that what is not written on the agenda, but just want to give you a heads up. We think we've talked about it maybe once or twice in the past. And that is the fact that currently we have a commissioning agent on the project. They were initially hired just to go to the elementary, the central energy plant, and then review the high school documents because, as you recall, the central energy plant feeds into or feeds into the high school. So they did maybe 10% of what's called commissioning work. We now would like to, we've seen a lot of value in that commissioning to make it short. And simple is essentially hire someone to kick the tires when it comes to the HVAC or heating and cooling equipment. So while the engineers designed it, they're kind of watching as it's going in. This person's kind of driving the ship, if you understand what I'm trying to say, in terms of really making sure the system really works, everything is the way it's supposed to be programmatically, et cetera, graphically, really to my term, in the weeds. So we're going to, ideally, we're going to come in the first meeting. I'll send you paperwork well in advance to amend their contract. They're called Brewer Garrett, to offer commissioning services to complete the high school. So I just want to give you a heads up. You'll be seeing an email probably in the next few days for that. And ideally, we'd like to try and do a single reading of a resolution, the first meeting in March. But again, just want to give you a heads up.
And again, that's the idea. I know we talked before when we did this, that you're getting a third party to validate that it works correctly instead of the people that installed it telling you it works correctly. So I think it's become more and more popular because those are such sophisticated systems now that it really does take a lot of effort to make sure it's installed correctly.
We had that service in the architect's contract originally. And again, to Angie's point, use the words, there are third party that reports directly to the owner's team, if you will. We opted not to have them go through the architect. We pulled that scope eventually out and look, you have an amendment sometime in the next couple of months. We'll recognize that formally, but we, it's already scope we had on the project. We've just opted to go to another third party, as Angie said, just to have a direct feed to us. Not that the architect would filter anything, but now this consultant works directly for the district. After it reduces price from what we were paying for the architect.
So did I hear you correctly? You referred to somebody else as being in the weeds?
There are a few out there.
I don't know, you're pretty deep in that.
As long as you don't accuse me of fertilizer, we're good.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Did you want to, anything on this at all?
Oh, no, that's when we figure out the resolution.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you, Doug.
Right, that is all that I have with Doug. And so Mark has the last part, so I moved him up with human resources. And obviously, he's been working on updating that staffing plan that we've all been talking about. So that's the big presentation for Mark tonight.
Thank you. All right, so we have taken some time over the last about a month, month and a half here to really look into the 250 home projection. If you recall, the previous projections I provided to you were the staffing projections based off of 150 homes and the 350 homes. And those are all within our work here. But then the board direction was to take a look at the 250 home projection, kind of where does that put us? And again, as a reminder, with the enrollment starting, we're starting to see a little bit of the pickup again of enrollment. We were pretty much flat to start the year. We were around that 150 home projection with that flat enrollment number built in there. Otherwise, we were trending a little bit more closely to that 250 home projection with our enrollment study. And so with the 250 home projection, we have taken the feedback from the board from that initial conversation back in mid-December. We have actually had individual meetings with each of the building principals after looking at the, just the sheer numbers on some things. But also going with the board's direction on the mental health, the instructional coaches, the nursing, the nurse support to the district. And I looked at kind of speeding up a little bit of the timeline, a little bit of touch and go with this because we know we can't add all of these positions at once for the mental health supports and so on. So I'll kind of talk through a little bit of this document. Certainly, it's all there as well with your hard copy. And you can ask any questions that you have there. But really, the changes that you're going to see are looking at the 250 homes with the enrollment projection numbers. You'll see here that we go from next school year at around 4368 kids, going up to over 5,000 students at the 28, 29 school year. The 29, 30 and 30, 31, as a reminder, are not in that 2019 enrollment update, so we don't have those numbers. So it was a little bit more guesswork and obviously is when you go out eight, nine, 10 years out in a 10-year staffing plan. But looking at the focus, especially with these yellow lines that you'll see there, I highlighted the specific areas where there are mental health, staffing, the nurse staffing. We actually sat down with our two nurses in the district and talked a little bit about what would that look like as we add on nurses? At what point can we get to where maybe we have a nurse every other building? And currently, we're doing more of a rotational model where they're both kind of going through it. Nurses are at different buildings each day. But we've kind of started to talk a little bit about some preliminary planning of what that would look like if we were to add on three nurses over the four years. And if you recall back at our previous projection on some of these numbers, which I have here, we were looking at two nurses over those four years. So it's a little bit of an increase there to get that sped up. We still are adding four nurses over the 10-year plan with this 250 home projection. But we sped that up a little bit to get that, to get that number more closely tied to those ratios that we spoke of with the recommendations for nurse or support at buildings. The mental health support as well, there was a little bit of an increase there as far as speeding up the timeline for it. Again, the overall numbers are about the same. To do that, we had conversations a lot with our principals about where do we feel we could balance some of this? If we get some of the timeline, where can we balance the need for other resources within the building? So we had a lot of hours really dedicated to really talking through each of these because we feel that from where the board, the direction was that this 250 home study is kind of where we want to start to put our focus as we move forward with the next big step being, what does this all cost? If we were to really look at these specific numbers to support the numbers of growth, to support the areas of focus for our district, what is it going to cost? And so that's, that's where in the next, you know, kind of that next stage that we'll be working through with the treasurer's office, really getting down to the specific numbers of things to be able to report to the board. So you'll see here with the high school, we would look to add two additional counselors in the first four years and another counselor looking out in this picture. The instructional facilitator, we had a lot of conversation with our principals and our administrative team regarding, where do we see the instructional coaches? If we were to reinstate some instructional coaches in the district and provide supports, where and when can we provide those supports? We don't see a picture where we can just add on all these instructional coaches immediately. We know that obviously the financial cost of that is impracticable at this point. So we had conversation that we really want to drive some of that support to the secondary level initially. So you're going to see instructional coaches build in there from the five through 12 levels. And then you're going to look at the elementary side of things where we build in a lot of the counseling support initially before we get to the instructional support. So we talked to the building principals at the elementary level about where do you feel you are from a standpoint of instructional coaches, which everything's valuable. Everything has a purpose and is valid when we look at this. And we would love to add a lot of these supports immediately, but really trying to balance everything that's out there. And, you know, we really feel that the counselor support is highly needed at that elementary level before that instructional coach support would come in. And so we did talk about, you know, an instructional support through an RTI or assessment tech coordinator in that second year out. But then it wouldn't be till probably that third year that we would reinstate those elementary instructional coaches through this picture. And again, really a lot of dialogue around, you know, the timing and why that would make sense for us. So then I kind of, just looking at the rest of this, one thing that also came to light in our conversations that we did not have built in here before was really a lot of conversation around the libraries and what do we expect our libraries to be? And so that's a piece that we're not looking to add full-time teaching positions for all of our buildings with libraries, but we're trying to find how can we staff these libraries full-time? And so that might come through the use of some educational assistance, as we've done in the past. It may come through some of our instructional tutors, if they have an instructional piece to them, depending on what those roles are and what we plan to do in the future for those positions. So you're going to see some positions kind of start to be built in around that library piece because we have heard that as a key to, a library isn't just for books today. It's a media specialty, it's a media center. And so the books are a large part of it. And we've started already to talk about some of our collection of books. You'll notice as well in our 10-year staff, sort of 10-year work plan, that as we look at that next draft that'll be coming soon to the board, we've also talked about the diversification of our texts. And so when we look at the books that are in our libraries, are they representing diverse cultures? Are they representing, you know, our population of kids or our growing population of kids? Are they updated and with the times? And really, our libraries have not been, you know, I think they've been well taken care of to the degree that we could possibly do it. But quite honestly, I think they're lacking for what we want them to be. And so knowing that to give them the tender loving care that they'll need, it's going to certainly take some work there. So you'll see some of that built in as well to this plan. But looking at the overall, you'll see that at the bottom in that orange, once again, those ads still are within, they're probably right in between the 150 home projection and 350 home projection, not just because of arbitrary numbers, but truly looking at that growth that's projected and then looking at how and when do we add on these positions? So with that, we would look at about 26.5 total ads for next year. And I say ads, but really a lot of those are restoration. They're positions that were absorbed for the last few years in some cases. And so it's looking at restoring some of those positions. But it would be seen as an FTE ad overall to that next staffing report in September if we were to move forward with each of those. Now, keep in mind as well, these are projections. And as we have continued to do in this district for multiple years, I know my six years in this role as well as before that, we have continued to say, there's one thing about planning and projecting numbers, there's another thing about coming down to what do you need? And so if we don't see the need to add a position, we have proven multiple times in the past few years that we don't add the positions just to add the positions. And we will continue to dedicate ourselves to that. So when we talk about these core positions, that's really where you're going to see the numbers tied to the actual enrollment. So the four core teacher ads at the elementary level potentially next year. That may or may not happen, depending on where the numbers come in. Can we get to those right-sized classes? Are those in certain buildings? There's a lot of logistics that get worked out throughout the summer on those specific numbers, the core ads. And so when we look at the high school, we've also had conversations about electives in the future. We're short, we've talked about that in the past. The intervention supports, just everything that it takes to run a district when you add on an additional 100 kids, 200 kids, 500 kids. But one last thing I did want to show you before I open up for any questions you have. The 250 home study, I did also show this graph. I think this has been helpful for the board to take a look at in the past of the nurse to student ratios and the mental health to student ratios. Under the 250 home projection, this would get us ultimately to six nurses across the district. And that student ratio would be a little bit above that 750 recommendation. It'd be 870 students per nurse. If we add that seventh nurse, it gets around 700. So we felt pretty comfortable with this number here. Obviously, it's way better than where we are today at that 2,006 students per nurse. And then on the mental health side, where we're 573, we're looking at adding to the seven current counselors in the district. And in this plan, you'll see it gets up to 21 total counselors and supports that would support a 249 students to every counselor, which is right at that number of the 250 recommendation. So it puts us right there on that bar graph, which is well, you know, such a support when we look at the 573 students to one counselor in the district as of now. So we really have vetted this quite a bit with our team. We really feel that this is a great direction to go. The biggest conversation, I think, now to drive where we go next is to present to the board, what does the finance side of things look like? And then certainly going into next year, we know that the money doesn't drastically increase for us in any way. And so if we were to add those 26.5 FTEs, restoring multiple positions and adding some positions with intended growth as well, that we would have to dip into that savings. And so we would be in the expectation of deficit spending dipping into that savings for the district. And so that's, I think, the big driver for where we intend to go next with phasing in this staffing plan.
And the feedback we'll need from you is, you know, as Jeremy costs that out, how much are we willing to spend right now until we can pass a ballot issue to put some of these supports in? Or do we want to push them all out until something's passed? So that'll be the next big decision point that we need help with from the board.
Any questions? I know that was a lot of information and a lot of numbers, but.
A few. First off, you did this at our request and I appreciate that. I certainly appreciate the collaborative style. It sounds like you spoke with the administrators and kind of tried to strategize based on the feedback of mental wellness, social emotional wellbeing and a new goal for the district. So thank you for that. A couple of questions that I have. One of the things that surprised me on here is the idea that you wanted to, or in talking with the admin team, you wanted to prioritize secondary counselor versus younger ages? And I was just wondering kind of the rationale in that?
Secondary instructional coaches. The elementary, actually, we did focus more on the counselor piece.
Okay.
So you'll see two counselors built into the elementary for next year. But you'll see some instructional coaches that are built in. Now, keep in mind that we didn't have three instructional coaches at the 512 level before. We had one. And we had four instructional coaches at the elementary. We absorbed all four elementary coaches. We absorbed the one secondary coach, so we absorbed five total coaches. But instead of adding back the elementary first, we actually had conversations to say, we feel like the counselors are more of a need at that elementary level now. And so you'll see the two counselors that are built in on that elementary side right down here in line 66 for next year, that that starts to get built in, that we would like to get to a counselor per elementary. But this is again, trying to balance the number of staff that we're adding all at once. They felt like, hey, we could get a counselor to split buildings for the first year and then start to build a good plan for as we add on counselors to the building. But the instructional coach support is more of that secondary because we do have some counselors. We really need to continue to get those supports on the instructional side.
Yeah, my apology, I misunderstood that.
Oh, that's okay. No worries.
Or muddled those two conversations. The other question that I had relative to these numbers, and obviously, I know there's another conversation coming out of this in terms of what's it cost or what's the other side of this ledger look like? But you mentioned the replacement of absorptions. And at the 26.5, you said, well, actually, I won't. Would you have that ratio?
I don't have the exact number of how many total absorbed will be brought back of that 26.5. I could certainly work through that to find out. For example, these electives at the elementary, those are our four STEM positions. Those would be restorations. Those are, those teachers are actually currently doing BLP. And so they actually won't count towards that FTE. We're just going to restore them back to those at STEM rooms. So that I previously had a number there showing four. It's actually not going to be four FTEs there. It's going to be just restoring them and there won't be a difference on the FTE.
Taking them out of the VLP, they're going into a STEM guy. So I suppose that number would matter to me to some degree, just to know, it's not necessarily 26 new bodies in the district. It's actually repurposing four, five, six and whatever.
Yeah, the key will be going back to that FTE staff report that we've done over the last couple of years where you see the numbers in red, because those are those numbers that we reduced. Those people, we absorbed positions or we moved positions to essentially say, we don't need this position here as much as we need it here. And so we moved the position, we reduced it here, we added it here, so it didn't change the FTE. But when you see the reductions, when there was no other move, we've actually just absorbed those positions as people through attrition mainly. But that's really where, when we've absorbed. But that's really where, when we've absorbed, you know, five positions or eight positions total over the last few years, that's going to be some of those 26.5 that come back. Especially the instructional coach side is one of those main areas that you'll see more adds.
Right. No, I appreciate that as well. And I just think that that 26 and a half number is a little bit like eye-popping in terms of our district not having had numbers like that before in terms of a single year.
Yeah.
So just knowing what the actual new body count would be referenced to that might be more palatable, especially if there's conversations that go beyond this.
Yeah. And I think it's also keep in mind that a large portion of these total adds, for example, they're really just running a district. And so when we think about bus drivers, for example, we build in about one to two to potentially three next year anticipating that we may have additional. This past year, we added one, one and a half out of the, we projected two. Last year, the year before that, we projected two. We only added one. And so we're, we don't need to add them, so we don't add them. But just bus drivers over this 10-year, you're looking at 19 total adds over 10 years. And so when you look at that bottom number, it's a big number. But you start to add up, oh, okay, well, they just need bus drivers to be able to drive buses to call the kids that we increased by 600 kids or so. And so when we look at our educational assistants, when we look at our, all of our therapists that get added in, when we look at each of these positions, sometimes, you know, we talk about custodians and we talk about food services, some of this is just doing business. And it's just a matter of, you have 700 more kids, you're going to have more messes to clean up. You're going to have more kids mouths to feed. You're going to have more kids to transport. And so that's, I think, a big key as we look at this picture out here of, you know, 22 total teacher assistants out of 10 years. We add about two per year based on student needs. Now, if we don't have to add them, we're not going to add them. But, you know, that's 40 positions right there over those 10 years to just bus drivers and teacher assistants. So I think that's, that's hard when you look at big numbers to recognize this is over a 10-year plan. And a lot of this is based on just sheer volume of kids. And some of it is catching up when we look at our counselors especially.
Thank you.
Yeah, and as you have questions, if you dig into these numbers, I'm more than happy to answer any questions you have. I've got probably about 300 comments on these pages altogether. As we've really looked at every single cell of this, we've said, what is this position dedicated to? Or why is this two and not three? Or why is this one and not three? So we've got a lot of comments on here to really, as we've talked about it as a team, that whoever is in this position six years from now or 10 years from now, that we can look back and say, oh, this was the plan. This is where they were planning on going with that. A lot of this kind of stuff gets lost as you look ahead or look back 10 years or 15 years to what was the plan for that, so.
I think one of the things that, I think we discussed last week during agenda review maybe, was talking about these positions, kind of restoring them and bringing them back. And one of the conversations that we had that I was, I mean, I'm still shocked that it was in first, when my son was in, our son was in first grade when we did away with librarians. And that the district, that we lost those 43 positions and that we're still playing catch-up to get those folks back. And, I mean, I think we can think back to the presentation that Mrs. Toma gave us a couple months ago about what they're doing at GRE to get kids in the library and choosing their own book and what that can kind of do for students, you know, when they're learning to read and the fact that we're still working, that this isn't necessarily adding so much. It's just getting us back to where we were in so many of these cases.
And we look back, I think, 10 years or just over 10 years ago when those cuts were made with the recession. Forty-six total cuts, I believe, was that number.
Forty-seven.
And so when you look at that number of people that get cut, well, those were all needed positions at the time. It's not that we have a lot of fluff in this district. We really do look at what is need. We look at really a zero-based budgeting idea that we go based off of what are the numbers showing and what do we actually need at that moment in time? And so to get ourselves back, when you dropped 46 positions, that was devastating to this district. And, you know, I think to, the fact is, we've grown almost 150 kids per year since then. And we're, you know, we are still trying to figure out, how do we get that back to those numbers?
And I think this also goes to one of the questions that Mr. Fuji had was the conversation about the fact that you guys have talked to the principals and that I was kind of surprised with the instructional facilitators that, you know, they were like, you know what? Let's get these mental health supports and these health supports in place for our kids. That really focusing on the whole child and appreciate that have such a close working relationship with the administrators of those buildings to really know where we should be putting, putting these people.
Yeah, we certainly appreciate our principal's support with this, our assistant principal's support with this because they will put more on their back when it comes to some of those things to ensure that the kids get something else that they know they can't provide the expertise for. So I appreciate all of their constant hard work.
Well, I think what's so cool to see, and I know we mentioned it, is that they will go without things, that they know there's a greater need at a different level. So it's not, I've been in districts where people come in and advocate for their own building and that's all they do. And here, it's not that way. People are like, you know what, we can wait. That needs to go at that level right now. So that's really cool to see as well.
Yeah, I definitely appreciate all the time and effort put into creating this for this 250-home projection. I know, you know, it probably would have, to shortcut it and just say, oh, look at the 150 and look at the 350 and split it. But I love that you really take the time and effort and, you know, collaborate to really look hard at the numbers and talk about how, you know, we can do this the most effectively, the most efficiently. And, I mean, I know, we can just always count on you guys to do that. So, so thank you because we do have, you know, hard decisions to make when it comes to money. And this is the key factor in getting, you know, getting to those figures. So, so I know it's a lot of, it's a lot of work, but it's greatly appreciated.
Thank you for saying that. And as we said, definitely a team effort. But I want to give kudos to Mark because his spreadsheet brain is definitely needed when we do this type of work. So appreciate all of his time that he put into it.
Okay, thank you. Just to go through, the last part of my report here is going through the agenda items for this evening. So just looking, glancing down there at item 13.1 is the first part of the human resources section. We, one position that we are looking to add is a temporary position within our district is a substitute custodian. This would be essentially a floating position. We have recognized a huge need for substitute custodians on a daily basis. We've had a lot of issues with being able to get some custodian, not even just sub-custodians, but we are really overworking a lot of our current custodians who are running double shifts to be able to cover for their building.
Getting overtime.
Of some of the needs for illnesses and so on. And so with that, we've had some health issues as well within our group here. So with that, we had conversation around, what are we spending on a daily basis for paying overtime for those double shifts versus if we were to get a full-time custodian sub? And even if we were to offer insurance, we ran those numbers with Jeremy here. For the remainder of this year, it made absolute sense to move forward with getting a sub-custodian who then can run those extra shifts there at a much lower rate. And we talked with our union because, again, there it's, we wanted to ensure that they didn't feel that we were taking work opportunities away from them. When we looked at the collective bargaining agreement, they certainly agreed that this was needed. They requested as well that we please add this because it would help with the people that are really overworked in their group right now. So it makes absolute sense, I think, from everybody's side and standpoint on adding this. So Richard Stretch is being requested there as an add. The second name there, Kelsey Kirkbride, is just a situation where she's a long-term sub. She's reached that 60-day mark that by statute is required to move to a bachelor zero pay. And so requesting your approval of that item tonight. Under 13.2, these are just annual stipends. There are a lot, a lot of stipends are down this year. We typically have around five or six staff members that are doing these stipends. We've had to narrow down some opportunities based off of what can be done within buildings this year. But we still do do or did have our in-the-no team this year and then our National Honor Society stipends. So given those to complete their work, requesting your approval for those stipends for this year. And they've done those now for, I think, three or four years straight now. And then the last item, 13.3, just asking your approval of those attached athletics supplemental contracts. We're looking at the spring schedule here already and flying through this school here. So it's, as challenging as it's been, it's certainly been like a lot of other years where things seem to go really fast when we look back at it. So we are moving on to the spring athletics and requesting your approval this evening of those coaches. Any questions on any of those? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Item number eight, the treasurer's report, Jeremy?
Yeah, I just wanted to bring to light two things on the financial report that might look a little goofy and let you know about those. In general, our budget is running, as you've kind of seen it, every month prior to just a little over, when we take out some of the two items I'm going to mention, just a little over in revenue but pretty spot-on and then just slightly under in our expenses. With the exception in January, our settlements or our advances always come in. You never know quite what you're going to get in advances. And that in the property tax area is really the reason why we are significantly under. To date, looking at what has been posted now, we are within a half a percent in February, once we get the others. So I feel pretty good about where things are looking right now with property taxes. But it might have looked a little odd to you in the January statement. And then in the retirement and insurance area, you might have noticed a big variance and just had some issues with our medical carrier and the invoice that they provided us. So it has crossed months. But getting that figured out and we'll pay them when they get it to us corrected. But that definitely skewed the variances. Other than that, we are, we're running about where we would hope to be. Any questions on the financial report?
All right, moving on. Item nine, selected board policy. The first reading of the following policy revision 6152, student fees, fines, and charges 6325 procurement, federal grants, funds.
And I will, I get to take these ones. Student fees, fines, and charges. If you had a moment to look through that, it is, most of it is what we had before. It is updating the policy for the National School Lunch Act as it has been amended and the Child Nutrition Act as amended. So there are some items in there that you may have noted that were added for at-risk students and eligibility for free lunch and how student fees go with that. Also added in area, as recommended by Niola, to kind of break out some of not, it's not limited to these, but generally what those fees are. And the rest is essentially what has been in our policy prior to that. So those are the couple bigger adds to this policy. Questions on the student fee one?
I might have sent the question to Mark, so I apologize if I should have sent it to you, Jeremy.
Yeah, no problem.
As it related to the student fees and fines.
Mm-hmm.
I, the blue is the new language that is being proposed.
That is correct.
I, and so specifically, the board will not charge a fee to a student who is eligible for free lunch. Have we done that before? Have we charged fees to that?
We have not. I mean, this is, I think it's putting in word, it's maybe changing the words from what it was.
It's putting into policy previous practice or?
We've had language to that as well in previous policies. Or it has been covered underneath. You might see in second paragraph, or I guess it's the first paragraph, where any waiver of fees shall be pursuant to policy 6152.01. It also, that talks about also waiving fees for different criteria.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, and other questions? Okay, moving on to the procurement, federal grants, funds. We've updated this a couple times over the years. One outstanding item, I think the last time we had this approved was about a year and a half ago. And one thing that was still being kind of ironed out during that time period is where educational service centers fell when it came to procurement for federal positions, for federal procurement policy. So adding F, finally, I think it was spring of last year, they landed on what they felt was able to be done. And so wanting to add that then officially to our policy. Last year, last spring was the first time that we were able to do that. And we do have some positions, so our tutors that we use as intervention, both math and reading for our disadvantaged students are paid with federal funds. So this does relate to us and adding basically what we are already doing into policy now. Questions on that?
Thank you, Jeremy. Item 9.2, it is recommended the board adopt the following policies. 1520 employment of administrators, 3120 employment of professional staff, 3120.04 employment of substitutes, 4120 employment of classified staff, 4120.08 employment of personnel for co-curricular, extracurricular activities, and 4124 employment contract.
Some of them.
And just as a reminder, this is mainly just more of terminology, making sure, again, it's current practice and requirements of the treasurer of the district to ensure that staff have proper certification to be able to be paid. That's really the majority of these altogether. So it's making all the changes at once. Any questions as you review this? Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Jeremy, whenever you're ready.
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mr. Crowell?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
All right. Item number 10, board members' items of interest. Mr. Ross, we'll start with you, CD.
Oh, thank you. Over at the high school, we've been trudging through the long third quarter, but we've been enjoying the snow days. So it's good to know we still have five left, so.
Didn't say we were going to use five, just saying.
Just a couple notes. I met with Mr. Jadoss earlier in the week and his Unity Week plan is in development stages. It's being planned for early April and that's made up of students from all sorts of clubs planning it, from student council and Leo Club and all other clubs. Scheduling has begun, starting with the juniors and moving into the sophomores and freshmen. It might not look like it outside, but spring sports are starting Monday. And the new, we only have one new spring coach at the high school and that is for boys track. And I love Coach Boylan. I've enjoyed working with him so far, so it's been a great time. I'm excited for the spring. And we're looking at a couple options for prom. It won't probably be the same, we're unsure, but we're hoping we can get something, something by that time. So that's about all we've got going on.
All right, thank you. Mrs. Dorsh?
The only thing I have is, and it was brought up before, but the video of the high school under construction. That was great to see. I know, you know, my kids, I'm going to have one who will spend second half of his senior year, if all goes as planned there. And then one who will have, yeah, a year and a half and one who will have her whole high school career there. And, you know, obviously, they've heard about this, you know, yeah, yeah. And, you know, obviously, they've heard about this, you know, yeah, yeah, it's going to happen. But seeing that video, I mean, they were, you know, I thought, oh, I'll show it to him, and they'll kind of be like, eh. And they were, you know, staring at it, like, listening to the whole thing over and over. So, it really kind of has amped up the excitement a little bit, so that's great. And a big shout out to Joey Thomas, who put that together and took those pictures and volunteered to do that. It's a, it's a great video, so he does great work.
Mr. Crowell?
Got nothing.
Mr. Fuji?
Nothing at this time.
I just had a couple things. Number one, good luck to all of our teams. I think we're starting postseason. I know we have a swimmer districts on Sunday, so a freshman competing in an individual event. So, good luck to John Wyon this weekend. And also, I just wanted to give a shout out to, I had the opportunity to attend our PTO president's meeting with Mrs. Hamburg and the presidents from the various PTOs. I was representing the high school academic boosters a couple weeks ago. And just hearing how that group of volunteers has done everything they can to try to maintain some sort of normalcy in buildings and providing kids with, they were talking about their Read Across America Week and the excitement that they're creating, working with the principals in the classrooms to still do those kind of activities for our kids to make sure that it's a special week for them. And also, all that those groups have been doing to support our teachers and staff throughout all of this. So, just making sure that they know how much parents appreciate them and all that they've been doing. So, I was, it was a good meeting to attend, just to see that excitement that they still have, even though those folks aren't able to be in the buildings and what they're doing. So, that's all I have. Anything else?
All right, item eleven, public participation. This is a meeting of the Board of Education and Public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business, and is not considered a public community meeting. This is a time for public participation during the meeting as indicated in the agenda. Please reference criteria for public participation, which is attached to the agenda. Do we have anything that was submitted?
No.
Item twelve point one, it is recommended the board approve the resolution approving amendment to design services agreement with BSWC Architects for new, the new high school and new elementary school project. May I have a motion, please? Suma.
Senator.
Thank you. Words.
Okay, we talked about this at the last board meeting, so this is with BSWC Architects. And I hand it out again, just to remind you, the visual of the couple, for the additional drive, if you will, the entrance drive into the high school campus. You all have that. Mr. Crowell, I know you weren't here the last time, but this is the drawing. There's a bigger packet that went on email, et cetera. But just to remind you, this is the two currently proposed. We're actually going to have a kickoff meeting and get passed on the resolution tonight with the team next week to start designing it. Again, it may be some blending of this. Again, we've got to look at where the utility lines are, any other, the goal is, of course, to maximize the development of that land on the corner there. So, and also make efficiency for entrance and exit. The fee is for twelve thousand six sixty. That is really a not-to-exceed worst case. I will share with built-in, anything we have to do with the village, because, again, this does involve storm work, it is site improvement. So, we've kind of done a worst-case scenario, if you will. I'm somewhat confident we'll come in well below this, but I asked the architect, let's put everything in there, worst case. We're not asking for a small fee amendment. If we had to go to any and all meetings, the village could potentially ask us to go to for a traditional site review. So, with that, I'll stop there again. This is BSWC's amendment number one of their current contract.
Doug?
Yes, sir.
Do we have to get a permit to do this work? Is that what you're saying?
We potentially may have to have an EPA permit, depending what happens with the storm.
Well, the architect said we wouldn't have to have that.
What's that?
The architect in his documents said we wouldn't have to have anything with EPA.
It depends on where the design goes. Like you said, we're assume, what we're assuming is we're going to amend the current set of documents, both to the EPA if needed and to the village of Sunbury if and when needed, from their standpoint for site review and zoning, so to speak, so. Letter D and B, is that what? Letters D and? Let me look at it real quick, sorry. So, yes, basically, what I went through with the architect, the goal was to put anything we could anticipate worst case, again, knowing there is no final designs. We're not sure where we're going to land on storm, where we're going to land in terms of, where we're landing in terms of the amount of pavement, what we're doing with the hardscape, et cetera. And we have not had a dialogue with the village in terms of what process they may or may not be willing to allow us to do, to do the site improvement. So, we've built it under the assumption that we potentially have to go through multiple meetings with them, and therefore, architecture representation and drawings, outset meetings. Same with the EPA potentially, depending where the storm work lands.
And another question, which you may be able to answer or may not. How many parking spots do we have at Build Out onsite?
I don't have to get, I don't have it right here in front of me. Again, in the drawing you have in front of you where the dashed road is, it goes kind of, that's a future parking lot. Both the future parking lot expansions are north of those detention ponds. Again, those we have to, as a district, not to make part of the GMP contract with Gilbane. So, I can find out what the total is that we have built versus how many we have planned and get those to you within probably no sooner than, no later than probably nine-thirty tomorrow morning.
Well, I can tell you, like other people, I drove around there when the elementary was letting out, and it counted a hundred cars.
Correct.
So, I have two issues. One is, there is no turn lane in the drive that they designed. And the number of parking spots back there, this would have been a choke point, once the high school got opened up.
Yes, now that we're operating, you're exactly right.
And in my opinion, that was a poor design from the architect, who now, we need to pay more money to correct a problem that should have been foreseen by the experts.
I guess a couple things to remember. The number of cars we have as a percentage is much greater during, there's that nasty wording, COVID. So, the amount of parents picking up, a hundred parents for probably three hundred and fifty kids is an absurdly high number for any elementary in the state of Ohio. So, that's not a number we're used to seeing at any other elementary. So, we're getting a higher percentage of cars. We do have a fairly long queuing area, but you are correct, there is no turn lane on the east-west drive on the southern edge of our property. What's a future road, which is currently a driveway, you are correct.
No, I mean, I mean the main entrance. There's no turn lane, there's no room to put a turn lane in the future. At some point, Miller Drive is going to be a through road. I would have thought that they would have designed to permit a fairly rapid exit per the capacity of the parking lots.
So, you mean by our monument sign, our illuminated message board, you're thinking there should be a left turn and a right turn versus just a single lane?
A left and a right and a through lane to go in.
Correct. Well, that's, again, with this additional drive will hopefully help alleviate in terms of separating possible students from young students or parents, et cetera, gives a second option. Again, we also have the far west or service drive, which currently we don't use a lot, because it doesn't go anywhere, it stops at the construction. So, it's not a secondary loop that we could also use. So, right now, we're kind of hamster, with just one way in and out, if you will, sort of buses on the backside of Prairie Run. When the high school opens, in theory, if we go forth with this drive, we'll have three ways into the site and two ways to get around the site, if you will. So, it will greatly improve the flexibility of use of the site. But you're right, ideally, in hindsight, it would be nice to have a turn lane there probably in hindsight for those ten minutes of the day that would be.
Well, I don't know about hindsight. I would have thought that if we're paying the amount of money that we're paying an architect firm, that they would, that's what you're paying them for, to weed out those problems.
We also, I guess, just to show, we as a district share the quantity of cars we foresaw as being going to pick up back during the design, based on where Harrison West Street was and others. We've actually supplied some of that data to them, but we're exceeding that data now currently. So, I know it doesn't help you, but just, so they did ask the question.
My bigger issue isn't the elementary. My bigger issue is, there's a whole lot of parking spots here that won't, that are throttled down by that drive and the design of the drive.
I agree, it'd be nice to have a turn lane, but I think we need a secondary drive, even if there was a turn lane, just to help with not all going one direct, one road, not one road.
Not mixing middle, or elementary parents and high school drivers.
I think it's needed regardless, but I agree with you, it would be nice to have a turn lane.
I'm not saying it wasn't needed. I'm saying that we're paying eight million dollars to an architect. They should have foresaw that, based on the number of parking spots they have on this design. Yet, we're expected to pay, it should have been in the original, is my point.
That's Dan.
Anyone have anything else for Doug? Jeremy?
Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Mr. Crowell?
No.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
All right. All right, item twelve point two, it is recommended the board approve the resolution authorizing agreement with Triad Architects for design professional services for the Big Walnut Elementary School roof replacement project. May I have a motion, please? Suma.
Second.
Thank you.
So, this is, just to remind you, is a permanent improvement funded project. It was on the master plan for the, and part of that development of that document, we're looking at five years. We're doing it over two summers, though, there are not adequate dollars in the PI to replace the entire roof, as well as some of the rooftop units in one summer. So, this will be a two-phase project. This is a hiring for Triad Architects, under see the design documents and the construction management. They would be on board for both summers for that construction administration, depending how our bids go in terms of moving forward on that project. Their total fee to go from here through the two summers is the thirty-eight thousand five hundred, and that comes in just over four point three percent. I figure that may or may not be a question in terms of where their fee percentage is. My only question, and you answered it to some degree last week, is you're confident that there's a way to do two sections of that roof without it having any kind of overlap or? We've been in, so we've been done, been in dialogue with our attorneys, as well as the architect, as well as we even have a Division Seven or local roofing company, been talking to them. And now, we're pursuing even through Meta, another opportunity in terms of roofing contractor. They've done this before, been able to do it successfully.
Doug?
Yes, sir.
The permitting that's in the architect's fee, is that state level or is that level?
It's state. So, everything, even in Sunbury, goes to the state, except for Delaware County does the plumbing. So, in this case, it would be the state.
Okay.
Anything else for Doug? Jeremy, whenever you're ready, please.
Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Mr. Crowell?
Abstain.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Thanks.
Item twelve point three, it is recommended the board approve the amended appropriations for FY twenty twenty-one to be submitted to the county auditor's office. May I have a motion, please?
Suma.
A second? Thank you.
Okay, so, the last time that we made an amendment to our appropriations was in September for our final, or for our permanent appropriations. So, coming back to the board to just make some modifications for kind of what has happened during that window. Some slight changes in our federal funds, just for some that have been increased. The big ones, though, are, we are reducing down our general fund by almost one point one million dollars to be in line with our November forecast. You might notice a large increase in our bond retirement. That is due to how we need to be reporting that to our county for the bond refunding that just occurred last week, the sale of those. And then, our, we've gotten a little bit additional anticipated in our permanent improvement fund, as well as, you'll recall, the donation that we got in December. So, a couple rebates have come in and E-rate, so modifying that fund for appropriations, and then also our building fund, allocating some of the interest for the athletics that was already approved in the fall. So, other, some minor increases and or decreases in what we call the student activity funds. But those, those couple that I just noted are really the major changes. Any, any questions on that?
And this is to the end of June?
Well, it's as of now, I can't say that if something happens, and in fact, we have, in December, there was the Essar Round Two, so I will be bringing back when we finally know what the actual allocation is. In the next couple of months, probably another appropriation modification. So, I can't say that this will carry us through until June, but it gets us to kind of where things are right now. And if something changes in between now and June, then I would bring that back to you guys as well.
Well, I noticed last year on the appropriations, we had seventy million dollars for, for the construction.
Mm-hmm.
And this has thirteen.
Yeah, I mean, I, if you'd like, I can get into the details of how the accounting system and the appropriation system works. But we have, what you are approving here is new appropriations. And the way that both the county and our accounting system looks at things is, we had already encumbered all of those, those funds. So, they're sitting in the encumbered prior year that goes into the overall expended. So, we are just approving appropriations of the unencumbered portion of the funds as of the, as of July one of this year. Does that make sense? So?
The point of my question is that, like, the thirteen million for the buildings?
Yes.
You're not anticipating that being spent by the end of June?
No, not necessarily all of it, no. That the thirteen million is included in what was already, it's increasing slightly, but no. I do not anticipate all of that being spent by the end of June.
Okay. My question is, in the permanent improvement fund, I was, I mean, I recall very clearly in December, the one hundred nine thousand. But really, that only accounts for about twenty, twenty-five percent, twenty percent of, where was the rest of? Was there a bulk of something that was unanticipated?
Um, there, there was a small portion that we hadn't appropriated, a cash balance. So, if, if we need that encumbering, or not encumbering, appropriating it now, we did also receive an additional amount, partly a carryover from the prior year for the Sunbury Meadows Community Development Authority. So, that has also increased it by, I can't remember the exact amount, but it's over fifty thousand dollars. I can, if you need, if you need more detail on that, I can, I can get you each of the breakdown, but very.
I don't need more detail, I was just curious about whether or not there was some sort of red label item there that I didn't?
No, it's kind of, it's kind of several, both that increase, as well as the donation, and then property taxes coming in a little higher. We, and I'll mention just shortly, when we talk about the tax rates. We had built in with the update year having an increase, but we're well over a hundred million dollars increase between new construction and, and the update. So, that has also brought up some of our, our taxes as well. So, all of those, kind of, all those pieces together, along with some rebates that, that were not anticipated, has kind of just accumulated.
And then, the one area that seems like it's got the most attention is the zero zero two bond retirement?
Yeah.
That was, that was a pretty significant, did you, was, is that about the amount that was anticipated or was that greater?
Well, I did not necessarily anticipate in June that we would be doing a refunding in February. Again, the, the way that we're required to do this for the county is that you have to, we're, we're paying off about fourteen million dollars and then reissuing fourteen million dollars, just to make it even, just an easy amount. So, what we have to show in paying off or defeating debt is that full amount of all of those bonds that were outstanding being paid off, as well as the money, the revenue coming in. So, in general, you would not see that high of amount, but because of the refunding and the way that we have to show that we've paid it off and then we got the revenue in, is why it's such. why it's such a large jump right here. And had we, had we not done it just last week and we were preparing this, this week, you probably wouldn't have seen this until the end of, end of the year. But knowing the numbers, I thought it was probably wise to, to get it done and, and make sure that we've got things appropriate.
Thank you.
Yeah. Other questions?
Jeremy, whenever you're ready.
Okay. Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mr. Crowell?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Item 12.4, it is recommended the board approve that fiscal year 2021 alternative tax budget information to be submitted to the county auditor. May I have a motion, please? Oh, did I read wrong?
No, I think, I think you're right.
Yep.
There are. All right, this is just the annual tax budget that we put together. The rates that we'll be talking about in the next are what are part of the document. And then this looks at not only the current year, last year, as well as looking into the next tax year, which is the calendar year. So this is a statutory document that, that we put together and then provide to the county. Any questions? Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Mr. Crowell?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Item 12.5, it is recommended the board approve the 2020 tax rates for taxes collected in 2021 and estimated revenue. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Jeremy, you again.
All right, so this also is another one of those items that we pass every year. And you will note that it gives both the, the evaluation of our, our district, as well as the, what are called the full rates of taxes. Those are not actually effective rates that are, are being collected. However, this is what the, the county, the way that they want us to be approving it. Just wanted to shed a little bit, I've, I've written, I think, some in the Eagle Examiner to share some of these rates. But while the, we did see a sizable increase in our, our property assessed valuation, I just wanted to note that we actually did see a decrease in our tax rate or our millage this year. And part of that is because of the growth in, in our assessed valuation. And then the other item I just wanted to share, very happy that we were able to, with, with the growth, we had built in that phase in for our bonds, the bond rate for the 2017, still anticipated needing one more slight increase this year and feel like with the growth and working with our restructuring as part of the bond refunding, that we should be able to, if all remains how it is right now, be able to keep that a, a consistent rate for the next couple of years instead of needing to do that next incremental increase that we had originally planned back in 2017. So just wanted to share those couple of, couple of items. Other questions on those tax rates?
Jeremy, I went back and, and looked at last year's.
Mm-hmm.
And there's a sizable jump on the estimated revenue.
Mm-hmm.
Like $6.5 million.
That is correct. It's misleading, though.
I know part of the reason it's misleading.
Yeah.
Is that there's only a half on the substitute.
Correct. They were only projecting for the time period that the levy was in place for that calendar, or that, that fiscal year.
Until it passed.
Correct.
But where's the accounting for the other half of the year?
So I, I wondered.
Should it not be included in this year's?
Well, they, what, this is their doc, I'll, I'll frame it this way, this is their document that they're giving us estimates. So they're giving us that snapshot. This now, the estimates in the current year are providing a full fiscal year worth of that. I estimate that the substitute probably collected around five, well, if I take the calculation of the, the mills of last year by our property rate, we, I would estimate it was around 5.53 million last year. They're showing 5.54 this year. And in the first year of collection, when you have a substitute renewed like that, it is, it's the amount that was collected in the prior year is what is, is the first year of collection on that substitute. So kind of backtracking into that 5.53, almost 5.54 was what I calculated, is pretty online with what we're showing this year. Does that make sense, Mr. Crowell?
Yeah, I, I understand substitute levies, believe me.
Yeah, yeah. But, but you, that's, that's a good catch because the last year, it did look very, if you're just purely comparing the dollars of what they provided kind of as a convenience number to us, it, it does look a little misleading. It wasn't, we're not really seeing that big of a jump from the 2.6 million to 5.5.
Right, but even, even if you take away the 2.5 error, let's call it.
Okay, sure.
We still have a $4 million increase.
I came up with about 3.6, but you're, I mean, you're, you're correct, we did see an increase, but that is also, you remember, about a million of that is bond.
Bond money.
And probably 32 to 33 is the PI. So we're seeing about, I would estimate about 2, 2 to 2.6 million in, in general fund. And, and remember, these, what they're giving us is for next fiscal year also, it's not the current fiscal year, when they're, when they're providing us these numbers.
It's for '21, '22.
'21, '22.
'22, actually.
Correct, you're right. But yes, we did, we did see an increase, to your point. Other questions?
Jeremy, whenever you're ready.
Okay. Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mr. Crowell?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Item 12.6, it is recommended the board accept the following donations. $115 donated to BWMS Student Council, donated by Staff Dress Down Day, BWMS Student Council Fund 2009612. $75 donated to each of the following buildings, BWHS, BWMS, and GRE, donated by Western Governors University, Student Teaching Fund 022-9401. $250 donated to each of the following buildings, BWELC and GRE, donated by Grand Canyon University, Student Teaching Fund Number 022-9401. $100 donated to each of the following buildings, BWMS and Souders, donated by Ashland University, Student Teaching Fund 022-9401. And $85,000 donated to the Treasures Office, donated by Sunbury Meadows CDA Permanent Improvement Fund Number 003-0000. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Have you heard Mr. Fuji and then Mrs. Dorsh?
I'll second.
All right. Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mr. Crowell?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Great. Human Resources, item 13.1, it has recommended the board approve the following contracts. Richard Stretch, 90-day classified contract, full-time district substitute custodian, effective February 8, 2021, Step Zero plus Ship Differential Page, third ship custodians. Kelsey Kirkbride, one-year limited certified contract, remain ineffective through the completion of her long-term assignment VA Step Zero, effective beginning January 19, 2021. May I have a motion, please?
Summa.
Second.
Any questions?
Just to restate, the, the Kelsey contract is because she's at the end of her, her probationary period?
No, it's with stu, a substitute, so not, they don't really have a probationary period with that, but it's like, once they hit a certain point statutorily, they have to, yeah.
See, again, I mixed up my conversation.
Jeremy?
Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Mr. Crowell?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Item 13.2, it is recommended the board approve the following stipends upon completion of proposed work throughout the 2020-2021 school year. Quiz team in the know, BWHS, Quinn Thomas, $1,000, National Art Society, BWHS, Melissa Maxon, $1,000. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you. Thank you, Jeremy.
All right.
Jeremy, whenever you're ready.
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mr. Crowell?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Item 13.3, it is recommended the board approve the attached athletic supplemental contracts for the 2020-2021 school year pending receipt of successful background checks, verification of experience, and completion of all necessary documentation. May I have a motion, please?
Summa.
Second.
Any questions? Jeremy, whenever you're ready, please.
Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Mr. Crowell?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Item 14, scheduling of next board meeting. Regularly scheduled meeting, March 11, 2021, at 7:30 a.m. here at the District Administrative Office, and one on March 18, 2021, 6:30 p.m., again, here. And streaming will be made available on the district website. Item 15, executive session. It is recommended the board enter executive session to prepare for negotiations or bargaining sessions with public employees concerning their compensation or other terms and conditions of their employment, and to consider the employment appointment of a public employee or official, and to consider matters required to be kept confidential by federal law or regulations or state statutes. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Jeremy?
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mr. Crowell?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
It is not anticipated that we'll return out of executive session to take any action, so everyone have a good evening. Thank you.